So this is a This is a breakdown of the bids. We had two bidders. HM, Noons and Sun in Construction and Mountain View Landscapes. The column on the right where you see variance, just for clarification, is variance between the two bids. Not another number. So the base bids for from HM and Noons and Sun to Construction was 1,339,000. And Mountain View Landscapes was 1,387,500. I have reached out to two additional bidders to find out why they haven't bid, but I haven't gotten responses to that currently. I went through the bids and when you look at the variances of the bids, the numbers while they're close, they're each category is significantly different. So I'm trying to understand where the discrepancies are in the bid. Both bidders did provide all the information required. Both bidders provided a bid bond. And then both bidders gave in this, basically the sheet. Joe, I forwarded those sheets to you so you can see all that information. The HM and Noons and Sun Construction is a roadway construction. They do mostly asphalt and rocks, but they do some landscaping. They do have two fields within their references. I did call the one reference I did receive was they did build a softball field for Waltham. I got a positive response for that. I did not get a response to the other. Obviously, I would want to follow up on that. I would also want to follow up on where their qualifications fall for doing the athletic fields. Because there are some qualifications that they do require. There was a discrepancy obviously between the the engineer's estimate and this number. One of the two items that I highlighted quickly through my own work was sod including water. There's a pretty big discrepancy between the sod including water. And again, from some instances, we put a number in there for watering. It came in significantly higher than what we expected. And then the other was athletic amenities and both those were about a $60,000 difference. And I assume that some of the athletic amenities is due to some of the COVID shortages and labor shortages that we're seeing across the industry. But those were the two major discrepancies from the bid. If you took the bid numbers, we kind of fall right in the middle each time, but each bidder had bigger different numbers.
Sorry, Art, can you say that again?
When we, I tried to quickly evaluate the engineer's estimate and where where we ended up with some of the bids. So if I took vehicular pavement, Noons and Sun at the top bid 85,000. Our estimate was 99,000. Mountain View bid 125,000. And if we go down to softball field improvements, which is the fifth rundown, you can see Noons bid 225,000, Mountain View bid 405,000. Our bid was two for the softball interference was 219. So we were 6,000 off of Noons' number. So we kind of ended up splitting, but when there was discrepancies, we end up in these wide swings from where the numbers were.
Steve, did you have a question?
Yes, just for the minutes, can you remind us what our total expected bid was? What the number was we thought?
So taking in when we added the drainage and JV baseball field again, this wasn't in the estimate we discussed, that was asked to be added was 1,87,026.
So it's again 1,87,000?
That's correct.
26?
That's correct.
Okay. So these are still significantly higher than that?
Significantly higher.
So in terms of process, our options are to accept the lower bid or to not accept either of them? Is that more to delay and see if there if the if more folks are planning to bid? I mean, you started out by saying that you had reached out to some folks, but the bid deadline has already passed.
The bid deadline has already passed. So there, we cannot accept any bidders beyond these two. We could go back and ask them to provide value engineering alternatives, but we have to ask both of them to do that. So we can't offer that to one and not the other. We can't take the low bidder and then and then offer value engineering. We'd have to ask them to provide that opportunity to both bidders. And then, as you mentioned, the other option is not to accept the bids.
And that means that we're in the position of needing to request a waiver from the state because we're foregoing this bidding cycle and work cycle. Is that right? That might be more of a question for Joe, but yeah, okay.
Yes, that is correct. And I had already reached out to Ann Colley earlier today to see what the process would be that would need to be followed to try to apply for that ADA requirement extension. And I have not, I have not received a response.
Art, when you mentioned we can go back to both and ask for value engineering, what would we be, we'd have to be agreeing to let go of something to do that, right? I mean, presumably they've given us their best bids for what we've asked for.
That's, that's true, not 100% true. We would be asking them to, one, if there's some value engineering. So they might be able to look at and understand, hey, if I do it this way, it could be less expensive. Are you open to doing it this way? If we change this material to this, can we do it that way? That's, those are things that they
Is there a reason we wouldn't do that?
I'm probably right.
Time is one. Time is one.
Art, given your given your take on this, is it possible that they're misunderstanding any specifications and and as a result bid higher? Or does that not look like what probably happened here? I'm just asking you to speculate as
Yeah, no, I mean, one, one, it's, it's hard to tell because there's only two bidders. I'd like to find out what maybe prohibited some of the other bidders because I asked them to bid as well. So like Shaker Flats and RID Sports. But because there's such big discrepancies in the number, it's hard to tell where what those discrepancies are. I mean, the softball field one improvements is the one that throws me in this is $180,000 swing between the two bidders. So I'm not really 100% sure where that is. Some of it, I'm assuming, and I mentioned this earlier, is related to watering. I assume that we probably underestimated watering for the site. That number seemed higher. The other one is the athletic improvement amenities, which again, there are some material shortages and things that are going on due to two things. One is COVID, which is seeing labor shortages of materials. Two, anything that has anything to do with polyurethane is because of Ori in Texas has massively delayed materials. So other pieces, steel, it's things that have been coming slowly, but are, this might be in that mix. So there are some impacts from that that are occurring. So I assume some of that athletic amenities number discrepancy is that.
I apologize. This may have been said earlier. I was dealing with a technology issue. Did either bidder provide any kind of itemization for the other line item? That discrepancy is enormous.
No, I mean, again, we did not line item the project. So we, what we tried to do, and again, we did this in this format to try and see if where we could see discrepancies. There are some enormous discrepancies that I, I, I don't understand and where, where those numbers are. So we didn't go beyond this. There were some line item bids that we did ask for unit pricing. Those are related to in case we needed a booster pump for the water, I wanted to make sure we had that number. We weren't paying for it later. And then some water line improvements that adding water out to the field that I wanted to have a unit for trenching and putting in pipe if we needed additional information. So we did ask for unit pricing for that, just in case there were some other pieces. Again, I haven't because in the same boat with, with a very short turnaround, I haven't been able to really dive into what the original estimate was and get fully what those the discrepancies are. I tried to do it as quickly as possible and pull those together.
Thank you.
Julia and Steve has his hand up too. I'm not sure.
Steve is first.
Okay, Steve.
Yeah, I'm just wondering again, because every time we've gone out to bid, the numbers have been very, very different from the predictions. And I was just wondering if you could comment about this.
Sure. So there was a third party estimate that was produced through PMNC. We provided that in January. I took that PMNC estimate and used their exact numbers to develop the estimate that was given. So I used their, their estimated numbers. There are some economic pieces that I, we don't have control over, which is the labor shortages and manufacturing supplying some things that we just economically are changing the construction industry. That I, I would, I would admittedly would admit that the watering number that we carried was low. Again, I didn't, I didn't have a number to understand what that what that cost was. I did call a contractor to get a number and he gave me a number and that's the number I used, but it clearly came in higher than than what we had estimated.
So can, I'm just curious about the timeline. If we were to go, we wanted July 5th start, which would have had us sometime in the fall ready with the fields. Is that right? Not by the start of school?
Yeah, we were looking towards having substantial completion towards the end of August and then enough establishment for the sod to be able to use it for mid to late September, which there was a cross-country discussion.
So if we were to go back and ask for value engineering, what's the, what does that timeline do? And how does that impact our original timeline?
I would get on the phone tomorrow, ask the contractors to provide a, another look and a value engineering list. I would have them, give them up to 24 hours, which would be the sometime on the first and second and provide that list. And then there would have to be decisions to whether to accept those value engineering components or not.
So does, does that mean it could delay the project by three days? Or could it delay the project by a lot more than that?
No, it's probably somewhere between a week to 10 days. There has to be a contract produced. Once those decisions are made, then there needs to be a contract produced. People need to sign contracts, then there's mobilization. So it's probably, and with a holiday in the middle, with the fifth, it's probably closer to the eighth or ninth before you see a contractor onboard.
And do you I mean, in my head right now, I'm thinking, why wouldn't we do that? If it's that amount of time? And, and so I guess maybe one reason is if you don't think it will yield anything. And so now we've wasted time for no benefit, but I guess, do you think it would have a benefit or?
You'll definitely see a reduction in costs and, and numbers come down. The, what that number is, I can't, I can't speculate. My guess is some of those would be related to it could be anything. It could be material choices. It could be construction methodology, things like that.
First of all?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think also a lot of times when you ask people to sharpen their pencil, they probably just will. I'm really torn on, I know it sounds like, you know, it's just a few days of a delay and that, that doesn't sound bad, but I'm really torn on putting this project in jeopardy and not getting it done for our kids. They don't want to see us having a wait till next summer because, you know, we, we run out of time. So I'm really torn on that. But I guess I would support going back, you know, to have them sharpen their pencils, if you will, if it truly would, could be done in a couple of days. Nobody wants to throw money away, but I also want to, really wanted to see this project get started as soon as possible. So I guess I'm torn.
Is that a risk? Is it a risk if we ask them to go sharpen their pencils? We could lose the whole project?
No, you, I mean, you'll lose, you'll lose time.
So if we can bound it in terms of, like you said, it would really only push it off, you know, no more than a week or whatever, then we should be okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna guess the contractors are gonna be anxious to start, so they're gonna be by numbers to do that. I assume there's probably some level of decision making that'll need to happen based on
Carrie, you have your hand up?
So I think before asking them to value engineer, I would want to know what is the number we're looking for, although we can't really give them a number, we should have a number in mind. And what is the deadline that we need to make it, the real deadline? I mean, we had a deadline. We're gonna be past that deadline. What's the very real, we can't go past this date in order to be done in time for, you know, the season?
The, the reason this timeline was specified as it was early in the spring was that we couldn't start until July 5th because we would potentially have teams playing on these fields until July 3rd. If they made it to the depths of the, of the tournaments in baseball, softball and so on. And the first factor in the fall was a September cross-country that would be the first major item to run across these newly sodded fields. Aside from that, it was, it was looking at JV soccer and the impact of, of not having that field that's in the outfield of the varsity baseball field available to the team. So I I think we're, we're really talking about the disruption that will create for the cross-country team as we push it back. That's the, that's the primary issue here. Others, I think that substantial completion are, as it relates to John Allen Field and being able to use that for games, I, I think that's probably something that we can work into the project to, to try to make sure we're off of that area quickly enough that we could do it. But is there anything else that I'm missing that you can think of since you know this?
No, we can push them to, I mean, again, when we look at it as getting access, ADA access improvements done earlier. So that things like getting the John Allen Field are accomplished, that the parking is set up for that ahead of, ahead of stance. The, the biggest one was the cross-country discussion is that we've discussed and having that established lawn for that establishment. This doesn't impact the ability for sod or things to establish. It's actually a good season to do it. And there's still 10 days. It's not going to affect the establishment of sod for that field. It's more about being able to use it within that period. The other improvements, again, assuming the low bidder is the low bidder, that is their specialty is getting those ADA improvements, the roads and all those other pieces. They'll get those in quickly and have those ready to go. So that, that upper field, the baseball field, the outfield to be used will be available. There'll be access to it. Fencing will be done, things like that. The only question that is out there, and this was brought up during the pre-did meeting is materials. There is, unfortunately, there is a delay on materials right now. So long lead item materials is just understanding when that will be. We'll have to work with a contractor to get through that. There's nothing major in here that's a long lead item. The concern only being some things like the drainage pipe. We're seeing delays currently. This is of last week. But some of the other stuff should be, should be fine. We're not seeing fencing delays, things like that.
Sorry, can I just follow up on the cross-country? So that doesn't affect just MacRae like that. Also affects Williams. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. I'll, I'll need to, I know that the college is moving its schedule around because it knew that it would not have access in early September to the cross-country course. I'm texting with Lindsay right now to see if there's an updated target date that they have.
So Christina, could I ask an additional question? And this is really just speculation and probably, I'm not sure it's very helpful to do this, so just say so if that's the case. Is there a way to know? Think how to phrase this. One of the reasons for getting this done now, aside from the fact that we need to get this done, is that it kind of takes the pressure off the bigger project, you know, and it gives the school committee a little bit of little bit of time to kind of breathe and reassess, you know, what we want to do if we want to move forward with some kind of bigger project, how that bigger project might fit into a strategic plan, how it fits into the academic mission of the district. And by bigger project, you know, we're talking about the possibility of synthetic turf field and the possibility of a track. So the beauty of doing this now as opposed to not accepting the bids and you know, just delaying it and going for a waiver is that, you know, it really does separate the, the need from the want, right? And it gives, I mean, sorry, that's probably not a good way to say it because need can be defined in so many ways, but the, the requirement as the state requirements from the, from this bigger project, which is just a much bigger discussion. So I still support, you know, this idea, the, the, trying to get this done now, which means asking for the value engineering. I'm not sure the fact that it's coming in higher is a reason, I mean, significantly higher is a reason to say no. And that gets to the question that I was gonna ask, which is is there any way in, on this earth to say, well, these prices are coming in higher? You've mentioned COVID. You know, the effect of materials. That could just continue to go up. I mean, we just don't know. We don't know if, you know, the because this happened the last time that the big project went out was that the bids were kind of all over the place and they came in higher. So this is not the first go-round with this, and Steve alluded to that before. And taking a pass on this doesn't seem like the right thing to do. So I guess I'm leaning it's a long way of saying I'm leaning toward value engineering without really having a good idea of what we're hoping they do, you know, how they're, how, how we're hoping they come in in terms of any kind of price reduction, you know, how we would assess whether they were reducing the right things, whether it's materials or going about, you know, their construction in a different way. But I guess I'll just, I'll stop there.
I agree with that. Carrie, I don't feel like we were far enough away from what the original estimate was, that if they can come down slightly, we're in the right ballpark, right? I don't think there's a reason to scrap it, you know, and not do it right now. That's my take. If it had come in at 2 million or 3 million, okay, that's a big issue, but it feels close enough that it's the right idea to do it to me.
I see Steve and then Julia's hands are up.
Sorry, I didn't raise my hand.
Yeah, I'm curious as to what I'm going to say. I, I can see all sides of this, but one of the things I remember is having this conversation before and having this before and having this before and having this before, that at some point we need to, you know, start making decisions and going forward. We have too many kids who are going through the district without having the proper facilities to use. And you know, the money grows while we have it in the endowment, which is wonderful, but it's another year, it's another season when kids are not using it. And so I guess my question from earlier was, are we just making up unreasonable cost estimates when we are putting things out to bid? Is that why we are constantly finding ourselves in these situations? Or, you know, as we're saying, are these numbers essentially close enough that it's not what we want? But we are very fortunate that Williams College was exceptionally generous with a donation. And this donation was meant for capital improvement. This donation was meant for us to be able to put things in place. You know, we are fortunate, we're not going to town meetings and asking the taxpayers. You know, we have a gift that was provided to supplement the building project. We are about to find out, you know, the stock market has done very well recently. We're about to find out the new numbers for the Williams Endowment and how much the gift has grown. And so I guess I'm in favor of in the next few months, you know, starting to do the building that we haven't done for years.
Julia?
Yeah, I I, I think I'm in agreement with everyone in that it feels like we need to move forward, but it also feels like we shouldn't leave money on the table if there is money that could be reduced out of these bids. And in my head, that's so that, that's more money that stays in the endowment and grows to allow us to do the bigger project down the line. And so I guess my only question around losing time is what's the, what's the benefit of that? And we know the cost. It may impact cross-country, maybe for us, maybe for Williams for 10 days. Cost, thinking about cost benefit, what's, what's the benefit? And I know that may be really hard to name, but it feels like it's worth it to try to save money there and, and then move forward.
And just a comment, just to respond to some of those comments, right now, I don't see numbers coming down. Right? So if you decide to move from this project, it's, construction is really unstable right now. So moving forward, understanding cost, pricing, things are going to change dramatically. They already are. So I would advise to that. Again, I don't know, I can't guarantee a number of what that VE will be. I assume it will be something, but I can't tell you what that essentially will be.
Joe or Carrie, so at this point, what, what is the process?
Can I, sorry, Christina, can I just ask, are we permitted to value engineer at this point or we can't change what we put out? We, we have to put it on to the bidders to tell us what they would.
In theory, make suggestions, but we can't, we have to bid fairly across the board.
Right, no, I'm just thinking like we brought one of the ad alternates into the project. So could we now take it out and have them bid it and also value engineer whatever else?
Those ad alternates are not in the base bid, the numbers that I gave you, those were additional. So they're below the line items in that.
But one of them was, I thought we.
Bottom line on that, the, where you see total base bid and alternate, those are the numbers that include the alternates. The above is the base bid.
If the art, what, what Carrie's referring to is we, we used to have two alternates. We brought one of those alternates into the base.
Yes, we could, we could potentially ask the bidders to look at that.
Okay, because that's one where we know we can live with it, I think. But maybe we need to, that's something that we can discuss now. In terms of the process, I was actually going to ask as well, do we need a vote to, you know, send this back to the bidders for value engineering? So if so, I'll make a motion to do just that.
Art, the, sorry Carrie, before you make that motion, I think Art, the important thing is that we would actually, school committee would be authorizing our team to create an equal playing field for follow-up bids that involve value engineering. So we, we would actually be proposing, here are some things that we see, given what you've done here, that could make this project less expensive. We need to document that so that both bidders have an equal footing to then evaluate and do it on the same timeline so that they can revise their, their pricing. That's the process, right?
That's correct.
And, and do they also get to say, and I think if you did it this way, it would be less expensive?
Yes.
Into what Joe just said?
That's correct.
Can we move to do what Joe just said?
I think Steve had a comment for.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just being clear for the record. The only people who are allowed to bid again are the people who bid on time, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, the people, correct, that's what I thought.
Yeah, you cannot, you can't add a bidder who's already seen the numbers come back and say, 1,100,000, I can beat your number, you can't, you can't do that.
I, I, I'm just, I'm just putting this in the record just for.
Okay, so Carrie made a motion.
I will.
So I think we're using Joe's wording. Joe, do you want to repeat the wording for the record?
Sure, it would be a motion to authorize the administration and the design team to perform value engineering and request the bidders to submit updated bids based on that and their ability to lower their costs.
Thank you, I will move that.
I'll second that.
Carrie moves and Julia seconded any discussion. Okay, hearing none, roll call vote alphabetically.
Do we, do, sorry, do we want to be very specific about the timeline here or that's already on the record?
Could we just?
Not as part of, not as part of the motion, but just as part of the discussion. Could we be specific about what our goal is for finishing our end of the process, getting it completed and bringing it back to the school committee?
Isn't there legal language that says as quickly as possible?
Art, what, what is a reasonable turnaround for you, just so we can make sure everybody's on the same page?
I, I would like to have, I, I would like to have a list. I will create a list tonight of VE deducks that I'd like to share with the contractors. Now, again, you don't have to agree with all those. I'll create that list, send it to them, get numbers, and then we can look at those numbers from there. If we can do it that way, I will say by Friday, I'd like to have numbers back from the contractors. Now, again, you don't have to accept any of those VEs.
Joe, given that, when is it reasonable for the committee to meet? Wait until Monday, you've had some time to look at what Art presents?
Monday is the.
Oh, that's a holiday.
We are not precluded. I actually, I've never tried to have a open meeting on a holiday. I don't think we're precluded from doing it, but I would need to double check that. Jake, have you ever met on the 4th of July or?
No, no, or, or when the 4th is recognized, so I don't.
Not, I, let's not. So Tuesday.
So Art, that, that would give the bidders more time i- if we indicated that we needed to get responses back in time for, but we, we would also want you to have them, I mean, the, the value engineering will be more complicated to review and produce some kind of presentation for us, so.
Yeah, I, again, in that, assuming I get turnaround from the contractors and responses from the contractor, well, I would like a day or two to do that. So that would be the, the 7th or the 8th.
So Thursday, the 8th?
Yep.
Do we know we can get a quorum on Thursday, the 8th? I'm available.
If we do it after 5, I'm available.
I, I can be available. When we're done with this, I have a quick comment.
I can do it.
I can do it.
So like 5:30, between 5:30 and 7.
So i- is it worth considering putting two school committee meetings on the schedule just in cases we're getting closer, we're not ready for the first one? Because we have to have things announced 48 hours in advance.
Well, we're not going to meet on a Friday, I don't think.
So do you mean like Tuesday and Thursday or Thursday and?
Something like that, or Wednesday, or Wednesday, Thursday, something like that. So that, you know, if we're ready to move earlier, we just have that option to just have the.
I like that idea.
On the schedule.
Do I?
Do we have a quorum for Wednesday?
I can make it.
I can make it.
We have a policy subcommittee meeting at 5:30 that day? If we did it after that.
All right, this is, this is Jose here, apologies for being late earlier, I think that's right, Julia.
It's scheduled for 5:30, I, feels like it could be a two-hour meeting. But this also feels like it could be a short, this topic could be short. So if we had a 7:30 meeting planned, maybe we could.
Be done by midnight.
Or could you pause the policy subcommittee meeting for potentially, you know, you know, we may not need it, but for 10 or 20 minutes?
Yeah, we could recess the meeting.
And then the hordes that are watching can just switch to the other meeting.
So to clarify, that would be a 5:30 Wednesday or Thursday for this meeting, and then if we do have it on Wednesday, the policy subcommittee meeting. Wow, the lag in the video, that's messing with my mind. The policy subcommittee meeting would be held immediately following if we do it on the Wednesday, is that correct?
I guess we could do that, yeah. Julia, are you unavailable before 5:30?
I can be available before 5:30.
What if we said? Five on Wednesday?
I could do five on Wednesday.
I could do five.
Okay.
This is the nice thing about Zoom, I, you know, I, I can adjust my script, pop out of anything.
So it's Wednesday at 5 and Thursday at 5:30.
Cool.
Or do you want to just say 5, no, someone else couldn't do 5? Can, was Thursday at 5 not doable?
On me.
Thursday at 5:30 is better for me, but if it has to be 5, I can do 5.
Me too.
Okay. So when, Wednesday and Thursday at 5, just to be consistent, okay? Okay, well, that was the discussion on.
Any, any further discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none, roll call vote alphabetically, please.
Bowen, I.
Conrey, I.
Constantine Epstein.
Elton Byrne, I.
Malloy, I. Oh, sorry.
No, you're right. Well, actually, no, I'm right, Green Eye.
I forgot, Malloy, I.
Mila, I.
Okay, great, thank you, that motion passes.
The finance committee last week, I got to go first, so I got confused.
Okay, thank you, everybody on that item, and now we will move to the next item.
For now, I obviously will get on a VE list and get that out to the contractors.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Art.
Thank you.
I apologize, I need to pull this up so I can read it.
Do you want me to read it or?
Sure.
So motion to move into executive session with intent to return to open session pursuant to MGL Chapter 38, 21A3 to conduct a strategy session with respect to collective bargaining, MGEA, all units.
I'll second that.
Well, I didn't, I was just reading, I wasn't actually making the motion.
I'll move that.
Julia moves it, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Curtis seconds, any discussion? Roll call vote alphabetically, when we are done with the roll call vote, I will pause the recording. And Joe, can you create a Zoom room?
I will need to be a host in order to.
Sorry, I didn't realize you weren't one, okay. Okay, um, roll call vote, please.
Bowen, I.
Conrey, I.
Constantine, I.
Elton Byrne, I.
Green Eye.
Malloy, I.
Mila, Epstein.
Okay, it is 5:47 and we are moving into executive session.
Steve, you're going to need to join in both of your Zooms or jump out of one. Steve, you're going to need to join in both of your Zooms or jump out of one.
Joe has to start the recording again because I lost my ability to do that.
It is recording.
Thank you. Okay. I apologize. I'm used to having giant monitors. And I don't have that right now. Okay, so next up on our agenda is discussion and approval of agreement with MGEA all units for 2021, 2022, and 2022, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve the settlement agreements with all MGEA units for the 2021, 2022, and 2022, 2023 school years?
So moved.
Curtis moves. Do I have a second?
Second. Go ahead, go ahead, Ursula.
Ursula seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, roll call alphabetically, please?
Bowen, I.
Connery, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Miller, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. I do not have any items for discussion. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Do that in Curtis, would you like to second?
I'll second.
Okay, so was that Steve and?
No, 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 Julie, Julia, Julia.
Oh, Julia made the motion.
The copy and paste moving, seconding is awesome.
Curtis seconded. Any further discussion?
Ah, yes, it's, it's not copy and paste, it's just overriding.
Gotcha.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Bowen, I.
Connery, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Miller, I.
Okay, it is, that motion passes. It is 6:03 PM. We have adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Jake and Joe. And have a good rest of the week.
All right on.
Good one, all.
Bye.
Bye, everybody.